Good evening, everyone. I'll just wait for the applause to die down. Thank you very much. That's very kind. Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome, of course, to the historic Capitol Theater. For those of you who came here tonight thinking you were going to see a movie at WIF, you're going to be terribly disappointed. It was a couple of weeks ago. But we're here for the inaugural meeting of Windsor City Council for the term of 2022 to 2026. My name is Gordon Orr, and I'm a proud city Windsor employee, joined by many of my colleagues here tonight. And I'm currently leading the tourism portfolio on behalf of the region, for which I'm very grateful. It's my honor to be your Master of Ceremonies this evening, and it's a pleasure to be with you as we witness the swearing-in of our mayor and our members of City Council. So please join me in welcoming the mayor and members of City Council to the stage. Great. Thank you very much. I'll put a shout-out to our piper, Ryan Birchill. Ryan Birchill, thank you very much for being our piper this evening. Before we go any further, I'd like to acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the traditional territory of the Three Fires Confederacy of our First Nations. This includes the Ojibwa, the O'dawa, and the Potawatomi. The city of Windsor honors all First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples and for their valuable past and present contributions to this land. Now, in a moment, we're going to watch a special video presentation of our National Anthem performed by the Windsor Symphony Orchestra. The WSO, of course, is led by Maestro Robert Franz, and the video was recorded right here at the Capitol Theater. So at this point in time, I'd like to ask you to please rise. Please be seated. Thank you very much to the Windsor Symphony Orchestra for that beautiful rendition, of course, of our National Anthem. And thank you also to the WSO Youth Orchestra, who were playing onstage prior to this evening's festivities. And, of course, to the WSO team and all of those at the Capitol Theater for making us feel so welcome. Now, please join me in welcoming Teresa Sims, Indigenous storyteller for the city of Windsor, here to present a song of welcome. Teresa?
(speaking in Ojibwa) These are words that come before all others. When two or more people meet, we send our greetings, our thanksgiving, and our love to Creator. We introduce ourselves with our spirit name. Mine is Kajeeja Jista Hawi. She comes from the stars. I'm Upper Mohawk Turtle Clan, one of the people of Long Hills. And I try to follow a natural way of life. So I'd like to send greetings, thanksgiving, and love to all that are here today, that our hearts and minds together as one. A good heart and a good mind. An open heart and open mind, that we work together as one heart and one mind, that role and responsibility we take today. Also, we'd like to send our greetings, thanksgiving, and love to those who aren't here. Those who are sick. Those in the hospital. Those incarcerated. Those missing or lost. Hopefully, they'll find their way and join us in the future. We put our hearts and minds together as one. And as we look out at creation, creation has provided us with everything we need. It's our responsibility to find what we need, how to use it, but how to replace it for the next seven generations. Because we have to remember, creation can survive without us. We can't survive without creation. And with that, I'd like to start with the song of the deer. The deer is the gentlest creature in the forest. So we can learn from the deer, that kindness, that gentleness, to work together and also to be kind to each other and kind to ourselves. I'd like to introduce a very gentle spirit, someone I've known all his life, Megazay Wright. He's Turtle Clan, from the Tsipauhtemse. And he's going to come here and sing a song for you.
(speaking in Ojibwa) Hello, I just said my name is Megazay. I am Turtle Clan. I am from Tsipauhtemse, the First Nation. And I am Bedaswe Shanish. I'm 12 years old. And I'm here to sing a song called "The Traveling Song" for all those people who were lost in the war and lost through residential schools and everything with that. That's why I sing this song today. Migwich.
Thank you both very much for that special presentation and warm welcome. Next, I'm pleased to introduce Marty Gervais. Marty Gervais is the Windsor's poet laureate emeritus. And he is here tonight to share two poems with us. Please welcome to the stage Marty Gervais. Marty?
Well, it's really hard to follow those two. They're so talented. I have two poems. And before I begin, I would just like to congratulate each and every one of our city councillors for their reelection and election. And it's a thrill for me to share a couple of poems that celebrate this moment with you. This first poem is called "Here It Is", and it's a poem about the place or home of government and the challenges for those who take up that responsibility. It was written and performed on the occasion of the opening of the new city hall on May the 26th, 2018. But it's appropriate for tonight. Here it is, in a town that runs to the river, a place rising from neighborhoods and promises of brick and mortar and words. Here it is, taking shape into a poetry of clean lines, stretching skyward with grace. Here it is, expecting the meaningfulness of men and women mingling in its shadows. Here it is, in a town that runs to the river, a place elbowing its way into new life amid the action of words and lofty gestures. Here it is, with a pledge to define and brings us into a new gathering place of brick and wood and glass. Here it is, in a town that runs to the river, guiding us into playful dialogue, inviting us to listen, to open our eyes. Here it is, surfacing from the sweep of huddled neighborhoods and urging us to sing of its purpose. Here it is, a gathering spot that's ours in a town that runs to the river. And this next poem is a short poem written for this particular occasion and is meant to offer hope and optimism for the future and the good work that will bring to the business of the city. The poem is called "To a New City Council", November 15th, 2022. The city stretches and rises from the river flat out to the open sky above. Ordinary streets and treetops shimmer in the morning sunlight. And this is the way I'd like to see it. Feel its life stir and find its people trusting and dreaming, their future unfolding as it should. And so I ask you, climb above all that keeps us apart and stand together. Applaud your city. Hear it wake in all its innocent hope. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marty. Very nice. Now, I'd like to call Steve Vlakademos, the city clerk for the city of Windsor, to the stage, please. He's here. I see him there. Mr. Vlakademos will administer the declaration of office for members of Windsor City Council. I'd also ask members of council to come forward as I call your name. And I'm going to go off-script a little bit here, which is never usually a good thing. But I did want to point out, as I see tonight, I see tonight as recognizing these 11 elected officials who stepped up and put their name on the ballot, and then congratulate them on winning their election, obviously. And then, thirdly and most importantly, thank them for their willingness to serve this great community of ours. So I guess what I'm trying to say, as I call them all forward, I expect and hope thunderous applause for any of them, even if they're not in your ward. Okay? So we can do that. We can make them feel welcome tonight. This is a celebration. Here we go. From Ward 1, Fred Francis.
Counselor Francis, please raise your right hand and declare the oath before you.
I, Fred Francis, having subscribed to my declaration of office as city councillor and to my oath of allegiance, solemnly declare that I will uphold and observe my declaration and oath.
Congratulations, Counselor Francis.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Counselor. From Ward 2, Fabio Castante.
Counselor Castante, please raise your right hand and declare the oath that is before you.
I, Fabio Castante, having subscribed to my declaration of office as city councillor and to my oath of allegiance, solemnly declare that I will uphold and observe my declaration and oath.
Congratulations, Counselor Castante.
Congratulations, Counselor. From Ward 3, Ronaldo Agostino.
Counselor Agostino, please raise your right hand and declare the oath that is before you.
I, Ronaldo Agostino, having subscribed to my declaration of office as city councillor and to my oath of allegiance, solemnly declare that I will uphold and observe my declaration and oath.
Congratulations, Counselor Agostino.
Congratulations, Counselor. From Ward 4, Mark McKenzie.
Counselor McKenzie, please raise your right hand and declare the oath that is before you.
I, Mark McKenzie, having subscribed to my declaration of office as city councillor and to my oath of allegiance, solemnly declare that I will uphold and observe my declaration and oath.
Congratulations, Counselor McKenzie.
From Ward 5, Ed Sleeman.
Counselor Sleeman, please raise your right hand and declare the oath that is before you.
I, Ed Sleeman, having subscribed to my declaration to my declaration of office as city councillor and to my oath of allegiance, solemnly declare that I will uphold and observe my declaration and oath.
Congratulations, Counselor Sleeman.
From Ward 6, Joanne Geniak.
Counselor Geniak, please raise your right hand and declare the oath that is before you.
I, Joanne Geniak, having subscribed to my declaration of office as city councillor and to my oath of allegiance, solemnly declare that I will uphold and observe my declaration and oath.
Congratulations, Counselor Geniak.
From Ward 7, Angelo Mariani.
Counselor Mariani, please raise your right hand and declare the oath that is before you.
I, Angelo Mariani, having subscribed to my declaration of office as city councillor and to my oath of allegiance, solemnly declare that I will uphold and observe my declaration and oath.
Congratulations, Counselor Mariani.
From Ward 8, Gary Kashak.
Counselor Kashak, please raise your right hand and declare the oath that is before you.
Thank you. I, Gary Kashak, having subscribed to my declaration of office as city councillor and to my oath of allegiance, solemnly declare that I will uphold and observe my declaration and oath.
Congratulations, Counselor Kashak.
From Ward 9, Kieran McKenzie.
Counselor McKenzie, please raise your right hand and declare the oath that is before you.
I, Kieran McKenzie, having subscribed to my declaration of office as city councillor and to my oath of allegiance, solemnly declare that I will uphold and observe my declaration and oath.
Congratulations, Counselor McKenzie.
And from Ward 10, Jim Morrison.
Counselor Morrison, Counselor Morrison, please raise your right hand and declare the oath that is before you.
I, Jim Morrison, having subscribed to my declaration of office as city councillor and to my oath of allegiance, solemnly declare that I will uphold and observe my declaration and oath.
Congratulations, Counselor Morrison.
Thank you, councilors, and thank you, Mr. Vlakademos. And now, ladies and gentlemen, we have a special guest to administer the declaration of office for the mayor. Prior to being elected, Mayor Drew Dilkins worked as a lawyer with George King, who was then a senior partner at the Meteg Law Firm. Since then, George was appointed as a judge to the Superior Court of Justice. Please welcome the Honorable George King, Judge of the Superior Court of Justice, Southwest Region, to administer the mayor's oath of office. And of course, along with Mr. King, please welcome Mayor Drew Dilkins, the mayor of the great city of Windsor.
Mayor Dilkins, please raise your right hand and declare the oath before you.
I, Drew Dilkins, having subscribed to my declaration of office as mayor and to my oath of allegiance, solemnly declare that I will uphold and observe my declaration and oath.
Congratulations, Your Worship.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me one last time in congratulating our mayor and members of Windsor City Council. Congratulations. And now, it is my privilege to call upon Mayor Drew Dilkins to attend the adult podium on the stage to present his inaugural address. Your Worship? Yeah, Gordon, that is a kid's version. Yes. It's a good thing. I hear it's size matters, Your Worship. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you very much, Gordon. Thank you to the Windsor Symphony Youth Orchestra, to Ryan Birchill, who was our piper tonight, Teresa Sims, and Megazay Wright. Wonderful job. Of course, our poet laureate emeritus. Always hard for me to say, and he knows that. Marty Gervais, always doing a wonderful job. And I'm, of course, very, very appreciative to my friend, the Honorable George King, for making time to be here in a special capacity this evening. And as Gordon said, when I practiced law, I worked for Justice King. He's an incredible human being and among the best jurists in the city of Windsor. And the judiciary is very lucky to have him among their ranks. So George, thank you very much again for making time for me this night. I am so very pleased to be here with all of you tonight. And I am thrilled for the new members who won seats on City Council and who are anxious to get started and have been eagerly awaiting this day. Councilors Agostino, McKenzie, and Mariani, welcome to our team. I know from firsthand experience that today for you is a mix of anxious excitement. And you should pause to enjoy every single moment of this experience because you've earned it. And as you all know, winning an election takes time. It takes money. It takes passion. It takes perseverance. And it takes ideas. But it also takes a team. And that team is almost always a solid group of friends and family. And many of you are here with us tonight as well. This win is as much of a testament of your support and efforts as that of the councilors who now represent our city. So to all of the families and friends who helped these new councilors get elected, congratulations to you. And to the friends and family who are also here supporting our returning councilors, thank you for your ongoing support because you know how hard these folks work and how much effort it takes to do this job well. I'd also like to acknowledge my family who is here tonight as well. My parents are here, Ted and Barb. They, from the very first day, probably always thought that I would try and run for this job at some point in my life. But they've been extremely supportive from day one. My wife Jane is here, again, tolerating things that most spouses would never tolerate. An amazing partner. And then it dawned on me on election night when I made my speech at the podium. Next to me were my son and daughter, Jack and Madison. And it dawned on me at that moment when I looked over at Jack. And I remember the photo from the very first win in 2006. And he was, you know, two years old. Two and a half years. from the very first win in 2006, and he was, you know, two years old, two and a half years old. And I realized that my kids, and on the city's website, it said, you know, Drew is the father of two young children. I had to have that changed because they're now both adults, and neither of them remember a time when Dad wasn't in elected office. So I've got two great kids. My brother Ted is here, my brother Tom and his family from Michigan couldn't make it tonight, but they have been extremely supportive. My in-laws Gloria and Ken, extended family who are here as well, always on duty to help. Neighbors are here, friends are here, and so many others, Paul and Sandy, and others who really worked very hard to help me and came out to support me, and I really appreciate all of you, and I want to thank you all for what you did to help me and allow me to stand here tonight to address you. The returning city council should be commended. The past term was not an easy term, and the effects of the pandemic and the ever-changing COVID environment created some real complexities as we navigated our city through difficult times. From mandates to masks, policies to program changes, freedom convoys, your tunnel business underwater and your airport business up in the air, trying to run a transit system when the local medical officer of health advised against using it, police, fire, EMS, all at risk, and almost all of your employees working from home. You did it, and you did it well, and I certainly want to commend the returning councillors for a job well done. Together, we put people over politics when it mattered the most, and I am certainly not surprised that the residents of Windsor returned all of you for another term. Now, we got through all of this with a lot of help, and I want to take a moment to acknowledge the city administrative leadership, and many of them are here tonight, and every single staff member for working through this complex time together. The leadership team that did what needed to be done was superb, and ladies and gentlemen, I hope you'd help me, join me in acknowledging all of them tonight as well because they're in the audience and they did one heck of a job over the last two and a half years. So it would be a bit of an understatement for me to say that I'm excited to start my third term as mayor, and you'll probably say, well, why is that? Drew, during your first term, you had to deal with a tornado and back-to-back flooding, including the worst flood in your city's recorded history. Most of your second term was spent dealing with a global pandemic. Aren't you a little concerned what might come next? I remember Joanne Geniak and I as city councillors. We lived through a major labor disruption, we lived through the Great Recession and the fear and the concern caused by almost 16% unemployment and the prospect of our largest employer going bankrupt. As a community, we collectively felt this trepidation and this concern. Four years ago, I stood at this very podium, and I delivered my inaugural address to you. In those remarks, many of you commented to me when you left that you felt like you left with a heavy feeling, as it told you what kept me awake at night. It was the prospect of our largest employer leaving our city. And then, almost in real time, the third shift was gone, a pandemic had a major impact on our ability to work side by side, which limited production. Then, when production resumed, a chip shortage caused more trouble and disruption. But instead of being concerned about what might come next and all of the things beyond our control, I can assure you tonight, I am bullishly optimistic about Windsor's future. You see, we didn't just sit back and let destiny be our guide, we actively worked to create the plan, to fund the plan, and to implement the recommendations. That plan is called Windsor Works. It's our economic development and diversification roadmap. And one of the most important recommendations in that plan was to secure Canada's first electric vehicle battery production facility, and ladies and gentlemen, we did it. A $5 billion facility that combines forces with our largest employer and one of the world's leading battery production companies. 3,000 new jobs will be created once the company, called NextStar Energy, opens its doors in just two years. This is a generational investment, and of course, it's important. But what's also important was the connection with Stellantis and the return of the third shift, the commitment for new vehicles to be produced at the Windsor Assembly Plant, and the additional hiring of 650 people by Stellantis at their battery R&amp;D facility on Rhodes Drive. Windsor is now on the leading edge of a global revolution in the automotive industry, the likes of which we haven't seen for 100 years. What a difference four years can make. The Ford Motor Company is also investing $700 million in the Essex Engine Plant and hiring another 235 people as demand for engines increases. It was Henry Ford and Gordon McGregor who led the way in Windsor that helped us become the automotive capital of Canada, and it's Stellantis who is pushing hard to help us move to become the mobility capital of Canada. And this is a position that we can rightfully claim. It's not a stretch or some made-up moniker. It incorporates who we are, it incorporates what we're good at, and it's also about where we're going. It's about producing vehicles, parts, tool die and mold, and of course, we are world-class in those areas. But it's also about the transition of vehicles from being something you drive from point A to point B to becoming a mode of transportation you take from point A to point B. Vehicles are quickly becoming computers on wheels, and this transition is happening fast. Success involves deeper integration of graduates from both St. Clair College and the University of Windsor. And I know she's here tonight, I don't see her, but Patty France, the president of St. Clair College, there she is in the corner. Patty, thank you very much for being here. Patty has been a champion, she has been onside, she has been supportive and collaborative every step of the way as we've tried to fine-tune what we do and do it together so we can harness the strength of both of our institutions, and I appreciate the spirit of cooperation, Patty, that you bring to each and every conversation. This transition also involves skill sets that didn't exist before but are now in short supply. It involves computer programming, engineering, robotics, control systems, electronics and electrical support, and so much more. It involves hydrogen research and capacity building. Folks, as home to the first casino in Ontario, let me say, if Windsor plays its cards right, we have a royal flush in our hands. And so the question tonight is how do we work to write our next chapter together? How do we integrate all of the key players in our region and a few from outside to help us position our city for decades of growth? How do we ensure that this period of astounding investment and transformation most benefits our Windsor? How do we ensure that construction of the Gordie Howe Bridge, one of Canada's largest infrastructure projects, benefits our region beyond the construction period? It's quite incredible to see those towers rise on both sides of the river. This, too, is a once-in-a-lifetime project. Many people have commented to me over the years and said, boy, aren't you so lucky, Drew, and Windsor's so lucky to have this new international crossing being built in our city? And guess what? I agree with them. We are lucky. But post-construction, how does Windsor benefit from trucks that have a highway-to-highway connection and never need to slow down once they clear customs? Ladies and gentlemen, the only luck we'll have is the opportunity we create, and there is opportunity waiting. In addition to those opportunities, there is more. A new hospital is on the horizon, and your vote last month for this combination of city councillors gives me great optimism that our new $2 billion hospital can now be completed and completed sooner than currently projected. I fully expect shovels to be in the ground before the end of this city council term. So think about this, the hospital, the bridge, a battery factory, they are a magnificent trifecta for Windsor, at least $15 billion worth of investment. But they only tell part of the story. Over the past few years, we've seen a local building boom, the likes of which we have never experienced since the end of World War II. We have population growth, building growth, and people now viewing our region as a hub for economic and cultural growth. For so long, we Windsorites were afraid to extol the virtues of our region for fear of people actually wanting to come here. Well, guess what? People are now coming here, and they're coming here in droves, which is why our housing market is still very strong despite increases in interest rates and likely to remain strong for some time to come. People are coming here, though, because they see the value, they see the opportunity, and they see the benefits of our region. It is extraordinary to watch our city, which has been through so much since 2009. It's extraordinary to watch it, the city climb its way back to the top with perseverance and determination that is unmatched anywhere else. Windsor today is a much different place than it was four or eight years ago, and it is dramatically different from the time that I joined city council in 2006. And our response on many levels needs to adapt to this changing environment. Collectively, we need to make strategic investments to position this great city to take advantage of the opportunities before us. And I'm not talking about wild spending. You know me, I'm not talking about wild spending, I'm talking about strategic investments that set the stage for our community's success for decades to come. Behind me, at every city council meeting and on the screen tonight, is the city's crest. And at the bottom is our motto, and it's quite fitting, "The river and the land sustain us." And we will need to get land ready so that the next generation has opportunities at home and can sustain our city moving forward. And we can do this while continuing to handle the basic and important tasks expected of municipal government. We will build our downtown into something great. We will deal with issues related to homelessness and mental health while building Riverside Vista. We will continue to invest money to prevent basement flooding while building a new clubhouse at Roseland Golf Course. We will get lights up at Memorial Park while finishing widening Walker Road. We will fix Dominion Boulevard and remove roadside ditches, the hallmarks of a town long ago, and will bring it up to the city standard, including sidewalks, bike lanes, and proper sewer infrastructure capable of handling the effects of climate change. And we'll work with our partners across Essex County, provincially and federally, to build important infrastructure, including at Lozon and 401, Banwell and EC Row, so that we are managing current growth and preparing for future opportunities. My friends, you may have heard me say many times throughout my election campaign a phrase, and I said it often because I believe it to be true, I said it often because I know it to be true, and I said it often because you intuitively know it to be true, too. I have never been more optimistic about the future of our city than I am today. Not a recession or a tornado, not a flood or a pandemic can disrupt the trajectory on which we find ourselves, on which we've purposely worked to place ourselves. Yes, there will always be headwinds, always, they never go away. But our little city of Windsor is changing from a big, small city into a small, big city, and this is an important evolution. The headwinds of yesterday have changed today. Our beloved city is picking up the jet stream, which will carry us faster but requires both steady hands and good eyes to keep us on course. And with the leadership that you've elected behind me tonight, I feel very, very confident that we can move quickly, we can move appropriately, and we can seize the moment before us, the likes again of which we haven't seen for 100 years. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you once again for the opportunity to serve as your mayor. I take my role seriously, I take the success of our city very seriously, and from Riverside to Forest Glade, Sandwich Town to South Windsor, from Ford City to Downtown and Walkerville to Central Windsor, I deeply respect the residents of our city and how they work hard every day to make this place, this city, the best place in Canada to live, to work, and to raise a family. And I take their success very seriously. Our best days are ahead, our future is bright, and every one of us on this stage tonight pledges to work with you to put the win in Windsor. Thank you all for taking the time to be here tonight. I look forward to an exciting four years with the new members of city council. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Mayor Dilkins. This concludes the inaugural meeting of our new Windsor City Council. We extend our thanks to all who participated and had a hand in its success. Thank you to your TV for covering the proceedings live, and thank you again to our host venues, of course, the WSO and the team at the Capitol Theatre, and thank you, most importantly, to all of you for attending here tonight. And now, on behalf of the mayor and our city council, everyone is invited to join them for a Windsor Pizza Club reception in the Joy Theatre, which is right out those doors to your right. The bar is also staffed and available for purchase of beverages. Tours of Windsor Essex was pleased to partner with our Windsor Pizza Club sponsors and partners to showcase our city's most delicious meal option, of course, and we're happy to share some of that with you this evening. Compliments of the season, everyone. Thank you for coming, and enjoy your evening.